Before we get started, I want to make sure that we give our sincere condolences to our colleague. His mom passed away and his uncle passed away within a couple of weeks of each other. And you know, Bruce, it's always hard when you have that kind of events. And we're there for you, my friend, and we will pray for you and your family. And I have some great memories of your mom. And the one thing about your mom, she was very straightforward. She didn't mince words, and that's what I liked about her. She told you what she was thinking, and you sat there and you said, yes, Mrs. Brucker.[37.04][37.04][laughter] And of course, your uncle Paul, who was on the school board too. So it's, I know it's been very hard for your family.
Thank you.
Anyway, we're there for you. So at this time, I will go ahead and call to order this meeting. And let's see. Mauricio, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mauricio. Okay. At this time, Madam Manager, are there any changes to the agenda as?
Yes, sir. We need to table Action Item G seven and Action Item G eight until June 22nd. We're going to have our year-end quick board meeting on June 22nd. So if we could table these for one week until the 22nd, that would be great.
Okay. So Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amended agenda and allow Chair to deviate his.
Second. Great. And no comments, discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Item C, Call to the Public. If you are on our Zoom meeting, it is star nine. Or raise your hand. Star nine, raise your hand, under Call to the Public. Carolyn, I can see you. Did you want to address the board?
Yes, I do, please.
Unmute yourself.
She did.
Okay. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
I think I did.
Yes.
Can you hear me, sir?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Schaefer, and I am speaking today as a board member of Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. Excuse me. Okay. A nonprofit organization working to protect the water and wildlife of the Patagonia Mountains and the Sonoyta Creek watershed from 21st century industrialized mining. What happens to the water in the Patagonia Mountains and Sonoyta Creek watershed has a direct impact on Santa Cruz County. Patagonia Area Resource Alliance forwarded to the county manager an overview of comments filed with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality with respect to South 32's two water permits. And I hope that you will read that document carefully, as there are significant concerns about the impacts on the water quantity and the water quality as a result of the proposed activity in the Sonoyta Creek watershed. Last month, you heard a report from Clear Creek and Associates addressing a concern from the town of Patagonia about the impacts within the town boundaries from South 32's proposed discharge of 1.6 billion gallons of water per year for four years. At the June 10th Patagonia Flood and Flow Committee meeting, Patagonia Area Resource Alliance's hydrology experts presented their assessment of hydrologic risks and concerns related to the Hermosa Mine Project. Patagonia Area Resource Alliance appreciates that a presentation by its hydrology experts is being scheduled for a future work session with the county supervisors. Water is life. We must not mine it away. I close with a quote from former EP Administrator Stephen Johnson. Water is the lifeblood of our bodies, our economy, our nation, and our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else wishing to address the board that's on the call or Zoom meeting? Raise your hand or it's star nine. On the call, anyone else? Seeing no one on the call list, and Jeffrey Latham. Good morning, my friend. How are you?
Good morning.
Good to see you.
I'm Jeff Latham. My office is at 1863 North Grand Avenue in Nogales. Honorable Supervisors, historically, existing topographic contour information from the Santa Cruz County Geographic Information System could be requested when submitting flood hazard information sheets that are required with all building permit applications, county and municipal. I recently requested this information and was told it was no longer allowed to be provided by the county surveyor, Mr. Fuentes, and public works director, Mr. Valdez. Yesterday afternoon, with two projects that would benefit greatly from the contour info historically provided by Santa Cruz County, I spoke with Mr. Valdez. He said he thinks the topo information is too old to be useful and that there are plans to redo the topo survey of the county in the next fiscal year. It seems to me that the contour information is paid for by public taxation and therefore is public information to be used any way the public chooses. I think it is the duty of Santa Cruz County to exercise any means possible to provide financial and temporal relief to its residents. And the availability of two-foot contours on the FHIS that illustrate at least the general lay of the land is one of those cases. I wonder why wouldn't the Santa Cruz County GIS user agreement be equally applicable to said contour information? It reads as follows. User understands and acknowledges that products are subject to constant change and accuracy cannot be guaranteed. The county gathers information from different sources and agencies. All products are provided as-is with all faults and without warranty of any kind, either expressed or implied, including but not limited to blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. The county does not warrant that the functions contained in the products will meet the requirements of the user, et cetera. The entire risk as to the quality, performance, and usefulness of the products rests with the user. This sort of disclaimer could apply to county assessors or recorders or health department information as well, where data is constantly updated and consistently available to the public. I think this relieves Santa Cruz County of any responsibility for misuse of the topographic information. Thus, I am directing my appeal to you, the Board of Supervisors, with the hope that you might intervene and reinstitute the provision of this valuable information that we have been able to rely on for a long time and has only been recently removed from availability. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And you're a little over, and we'll make sure that Jennifer and we'll ask Legal to review that too, so.
Where are we going for lunch? Where are we going for lunch?
Well, the phone hasn't gone off unless yours went off, then I don't know. We're going to go to La Ley.[555.32][555.32][laughter] Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else under Call to the Public? If you're on the call, anyone else? Take care, Jeff. Anyone else under Call to the Public, going once? Going twice? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on then to Item D, Current Event. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. The community also in the last couple of weeks lost another community member, Jubie Bell, who was a nurse practitioner and just a school board member and just an all-around out, you know, great person and really involved in our community. So we just want to acknowledge Jubie's passing and condolences to her family. Last Saturday, we had a trash cleanup, the first of which I hope is many. And I'd like to thank Ray Sayre, Jesus Valdez, Public Works, and Emergency Services for helping get that organized. Had great turnout and great support. The Sheriff's Department did a lot of work. They had a lot of sheriff's officers and family members of the sheriff show up to do some work. Also had Rio Rico Fire Department show up and helping us driving, you know, picking up trash, but also driving emergency vehicles around, making sure people were going slow on Rio Rico Drive. But also included in that, we had members of Friends of the River, the, can't read my handwriting, the Rio Rico High School, different Rio Rico High School clubs. You had a Nogales hiking club show up. Had about 30 members show up in the one group and about 15 or more members of the sheriff's officers. So it was a great day, and we hope to repeat this in August, start working on Pendleton. And also, last week, we held a conference with Local First Arizona, working with nonprofits and businesses for grant assistance. So I'd like to thank them for doing that. I also like to thank Juan in IT for managing and organizing the Zoom call. Certainly couldn't have done that myself. So Juan, thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Supervisor Malaeta.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I too want to again give our colleague Bruce Bracker our condolences on behalf of my family, to him on the passing of his mom and his uncle. Also, I want to send out my condolences to Jubie Bell, the Bell family. She was an institution in Santa Cruz County, along with Bruce's family as well. Did a lot of work with the community. And so we really appreciate all they've done, and our deepest condolences go out to them. I know Ray Sayre is going to be retiring. I won't be here for your going away. I mentioned it to you, and I want to thank you for all that you've done with our Emergency Management Services Department. And hopefully, we can not let you go and have you assist us in the incoming year or so with training someone new. And thank you. Thank you again for your services. And lastly, Jennifer and I were on the phone with ADQ and ADOT on our biweekly meeting in reference to the issues we were having at the Cal Portland plant. Things have gotten a little bit more promising. There's a possibility of the asphalt plant actually moving up north and by mid-July. And they have told us they were going to stop working evenings, and last night, they were working at 8:30. But I got an email and then contacted Billy Padilla. Billy Padilla got back to me by 8:45, they had stopped. So they weren't working overnight the way they had been in the past, and that's really nice of them to have kind of kept their word. And by the looks of things, if you ride up the freeway, they have completed most of our section in Santa Cruz County. So they will be moving up north, hopefully here soon in a couple of weeks. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Malaeta. Tomorrow, I've been invited to a roundtable with the governor. He's coming down to Nogales for 1015 roundtable with, I don't know, about 15 community members. It's going to be a closed door, and then afterwards, there's a ribbon cutting and some other things that will be happening. And, you know, it's tough to say goodbye to good friends, and I know Jubie was a good friend of mine. And I know we mentioned her passing at our last board meeting, but she really was a very loving and caring person. And we also have another parent of a member of our county, Patricia Barrasa, whose father, Nacho Acuña, passed away. And the sad thing is that both services are on Saturday at 10:00 AM. So I don't know how you split yourself and attend both of them, but they will be sorely missed. And short timer. My friend, you've really done a great job for Santa Cruz County as the emergency director. I mean, you've really taken that office to another level with professionalism, finding money, leading the way with a lot of new things that were done here, and that's because of your efforts and your team. And, you know, I know hopefully, if there are things where, once you're retired and we need to bring you in, you know, as a consultant wherever, hopefully you'll be available. We'll make sure we give you some notice. So if you're fishing, you can come and assist us. But Ray, it's been a privilege to work with you and to see what you've done there. And, you know, it's always hard to try to find someone else to fit in your shoes when you set the bar so high that it makes it high. But, you know, hopefully, if we do find the right person, that you can assist in training to make sure that there is no loss in the services provided through your department. But, you know, I know you're looking forward to spending some time with your family, and we wish you nothing but the best. And we'll be there on the 30th to celebrate your service to Santa Cruz County. So thank you, my friend. Okay.
Mr. Chair. So in my little fog, Ray, I forgot that you were retiring.[1050.13][1050.13][laughter] So I've always appreciated having you there. You've always been very clear in explaining what was going on in these emergencies. I've always joked, you know, that you are the scariest guy in Santa Cruz County[1064.13][1064.13][laughter] when you explain your scenarios to me. But I've always appreciated, you know, your level of professionalism, your calm demeanor, and the way you've presented things. So I'd like to thank you for that over the last five years for me. And so, thanks, Ray. I'll see you the 30th.
Good. Any other? If not, then we'll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem. We'll move on to Item Two, Managers' Report. Madam Manager.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Over the last two weeks, I've attended an Arizona County Insurance Board meeting. As Mr. Supervisor Malera mentioned, we've continued our meetings with ADQ and ADOT regarding the Cal Portland Fisher operation. I also had a meeting with Pima and Cochise County on ways that we might consolidate services or expand services with, you know, three counties being involved. And finally, I had the privilege of hosting the county managers in Toubac last week. So 12 of the 15 counties showed up, and we had a great time in Toubac. That's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you. No questions of the manager. Good. We'll move on then to Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash, Investment, Expenditure, Revenue Report. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $13,903,193 with an investment amount of $6,784,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,377,437 with an investment amount of $815,000. The flood control district has an overall balance of $2,903,539 with an investment amount of $1.8 million. The jail district has an overall balance of $3,476,190 with an investment amount just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $39,942,270 with an investment amount of $12,276,000. For an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $11,165,235.
Great. Thank you, Mauricio. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, we'll move on. And at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess a regular session convening to the jail district.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now in the jail district. Item one, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to Fill A, Booking Clerk Position, and B, Two Detention Officer Positions They Are Budgeted For?
Yes, sir.
Do you all entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to fill the positions that requested. Any discussion, comments, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and items are passed. Item two, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Agreement with Ken Jones Consulting for a Jail Rate Study in the Amount of $4,800.
Move to approve.
Now, second. And Mauricio.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a jail rate study for the inmates to verify if we're up into the standards of what we've been charging the federal government. And Ken Jones usually typically provides a cost allocation study for us that we use. We rely on his services. He's really good. He's going to provide this study so we can have that as kind of like backup for us so we can go to the federal government, say, the current rate that we have currently is not up to par, and we can negotiate a better rate for our inmates.
Great. Perfect. Any questions or comments? If not, there's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let me see. Item three, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Professional Services Contract Between Advanced Correctional Health, Inc., and the Jail District for the Provision of Medical Services for Adult Inmates and Juveniles. Madam Manager.
Good morning again. As you all know, we entered into a contract that began July, or January 1st of 2021. That company has since given us a 90-day notice that they will no longer be providing medical services for our detention facility. And so therefore, we have gone to our second bidder, who is Advanced Correctional Healthcare. I'd like to really thank Ms. Hunley. She's done an amazing job at negotiating this contract and getting us something that is before you today. It hasn't been an easy feat, as you can imagine, trying to get a contract together in less than 90 days to provide medical services has been a challenge, one that we never hoped to go through again. So [laughs] I can entertain any questions the board may have, but this is just, this medical service will start on July 17th, and our current contract's going to end on July 16th.
Great. Well, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Take a second.
Second.
And under Discussion, Jennifer, thank you. Kim, super thank you. Now, you're a pro at negotiations, and maybe we'll bring you to all our negotiations. But yeah, I think it's important that we have those services for inmates, and we comply with federal statutes and laws to make sure that the inmates are taken care of. So, great. So there is a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our jail district and reconvene regular session.
So move.
Take a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Action Items, one, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to A, to Fill, excuse me, A, Executive Assistant Position, County Attorney, B, Judicial Assistant Position, Superior Court, C, Public Safety Telecommunication or Communicator Position, Sheriff's Control, D, Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Officer Position, and Item E, Equipment Operator Position. All these are budgeted items?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Take a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to A, Reclassify Two Eligibility Specials from Positions in WIOA to Workforce Development Specialist, B, Reclassify and Fill Two Eligibility Specialist Positions in WIOA for Workforce Development Specialist, and C, Create and Fill Business Outreach Coordinator Position in WIOA.
Move to approve.
Now, second. Everything in order there, madam?
Yes, sir.
Great. Discussion, comments, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Appointment of Precinct Committee Persons for Santa Cruz County, A, Ana Lisbeth Don, Nogales, 12, for the Democratic Party, requested by Frances Glad, Chairwoman, B, Frederick R. Milner, Nogales, 12, requested by Stephen McEwen, Chairman of the Republican Party, and Patricia G. Munoz Caño, Nogales, 12, and also requested by Steve McEwen, Chairman of the Republican Party. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and the precinct people are appointed, and that shows that we are a bipartisan working group. Item four, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Marketing Hub and Strategy Agreement with Anchorwave for Website Design, Internet Marketing, and Ongoing Maintenance for an Initial Investment of $23,734. That is from WIOA. Everything in order?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Valderes, and I see Ms. Aracima on the phone as well, if the board has any questions.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve a Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statute, subsection 38-86301. And that's from Mauricio. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the annual policy that we are required by state statute to approve by the board. It provides the amount of the PSPRS and the corp that we are, the liability amounts that we have to post on the internet.
Great.
On our website.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Take a second. Any further discussion or comments?
Was, Mauricio, what was the change from last year? Was there a change from last year?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there was a slight change in our liability in the PSPRS. It did increase just a slight amount. In the corp, it dropped a little bit as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, there's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Service Rental Agreement with Prudential Overall Supply to Supply Uniform Garments for the Maintenance Department. Everything in order, Mauricio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is in order. Yes, sir.
To approve.
Take a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, Discussion, Possible Action, Recommendations for Approval or Disapproval of Application for Liquor License for Sunset Ride in Elgin. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Yes, sir. Everything in order.
Great. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve there in second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Discussion, Possible Action, Recommendation of Approval or Disapproval of Application for Extension of Premises, and this would be permanent, for Halicon Vineyards LLC DBA Rune Wines. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Good.
Everything in order.
Great.
Okay, move to approve.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, Discussion, man, we're sure approving a lot of liquor licenses, huh? I wonder why? People are coming out of the pandemic.
Pandemic's over.
Yeah. Okay, item 11, Discussion, Possible Action. Yeah. Okay, item 11, discussion, possible action, recommendation of approval or disapproval of application for special event license for Wisdom Sports 742021. Madam Clerk, everything in order again?
Yes, sir. Everything is in order.
Great.
Move to approve.
There a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 12, tax valuations A through double D. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and let's come all the way to the other. Item 13, monthly reports. Madam Clerk, are all reports in?
Yes, sir. All reports are in.
Great. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and I think that's two months in a row that they've all been in. All right, we're turning the tide.
Good job, Madam Clerk.
Item 14, approval of minutes of 6:12021. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and our minutes are approved. Item 15, demands. Supervisor Maleta.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve demands totaling $3,496,394.26, of which $419,893.74 are from the general fund.
There a second.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We can pay our bills. At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convened into the public hearing, and it is resolution number 2120-06 for the formation and establishment of the Trujillo Trail Domestic Water Improvement District. Madam Manager, because I don't think, Alma, are you going to handle this one?
Madam Manager is not going to handle it either, either. I'm going to punt to Mr. Frank Cassidy, if that's okay, to give you the background of the public hearing.
Well, you shouldn't have punned. You should have just given him a lateral. There we go. Frank, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors. I'm Frank Cassidy. I'm an attorney from Tucson, recently retired as Marana Town Attorney. I'd like to thank your staff, and particularly Kimberly Hunley, for her assistance through this process. I'm representing the folks who petitioned you to establish the Trujillo Trail Domestic Water Improvement District. This would serve the Espoa area, the Aliso Springs Property Owners Association area. It's a square mile of land along, basically at the end of Aliso Springs Road. That area has developed really pretty slowly over the last 40 or so years. There were originally some covenants recorded back in 1975, anticipating development out there. And over the years, a water system was just put in, I mean, initially not really anything more than like a shared well agreement, really. But over the years, of course, it's expanded, and now they find themselves at a point where they're really going to need, because the wells haven't done particularly well. In that area, there's a gas line that runs just a little bit east of the Espoa area, and that gas line is kind of the demarcation, if you will, between the area where wells do pretty well, which is to the east of that line, they do pretty well, as you get closer to the Santa Cruz River. And then as you go west of that, the gas line, the wells have not produced too well. So, there's a well at 42 Aliso Springs Road, which is a little bit to the east of the Espoa area, where the well is, looks like it's going to be quite productive, and the desire is to connect to that well to provide really reliable service to the Espoa area. So, in looking at that connection, the property owners realize that they really probably are going to need some help from WIFA, the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority of Arizona, and probably some financial help to connect that. Well, WIFA only will deal with either local government entities, like a special district, a Dwit, if you will, city or town, or a county, or a public service corporation that's regulated by the Corporation Commission. So, really, the folks out there need to get a little formal about their operation, and they either need to create an ACC-regulated corporation or a domestic water improvement district. And the decision was really made to move in the direction of forming the Dwit. And so, as you know from my appearance via Zoom a little while back, the first step was that there was already an old Dwit for a portion of the Espoa property that had existed but didn't do anything. It had existed for over 10 years or so, and that was then dissolved so that we could move forward with the establishment of this new Dwit. The formation of the Dwit required the circulation of letters to all of the property owners within Espoa. It included a requirement actually to amend their covenants so that the transfer could occur of the water facility could occur from Espoa to the new Dwit, assuming that it's formed here today. And that was overwhelmingly approved. I mean, you had, like, on the order of 80% support. You do have a letter in opposition to it from one of the former members of the Water Committee of Espoa, who looks like, he feels like we might be moving too fast, but in reality, as I understand it, and really, there are people who have been more directly involved who are here, John Combo, who's on the proposed board, and also Jackson Jenkins, who's on the call, on the Zoom call, who would be able to answer specific questions about the history. But as I understand it, there have been discussions over the last two years about the formation of the Dwit and the need to actually move in that direction. So, I'm sure they can answer some more of the technical questions. In terms of the formation, not only did the petitioners reach out to the property owners within Espoa, but they were also approached by the property owner just immediately to the east, property owned by Al Horin, I think is how you say it, LLC. They're in really the same circumstance as the Espoa area, and the concern was that if we just came to you asking for a formation of the Dwit in the Espoa area, they would come in and ask to be added, and, you know, since they're in sort of the same circumstances, and since our water line is going to go right next to their property, and the existing water lines, in fact, are very close, that that would cause a delay while you looked into that. So, instead of facing that, we went ahead and asked to include them in the original formation of the district. They are one of the signers on the petition. So, we think we have very good support for this, and we would ask for your approval. If it is approved today, the Dwit Board of Directors plans to set up an initial meeting as soon as possible. They'll meet in the community center over in Tubac, so that we can try to meet the schedule for budget, which will be the third week of July for the tentative budget approval and such. So, at that point, I'd be willing to answer any questions that you might have. But again, John Combo and Jackson Jenkins are also available.
Great. So, we'll open it up to my colleagues. Mr. Bracker?
Mr. Chairman, I've only heard positive comments about this formation of this water district from my constituents. I think they've done a really good job pulling it together, and I'd like to thank you for coming in and talking to us.
Great. Supervisor Maleta?
No, I just want to commend the efforts, because I believe that other water, the organization was just in disarray, or, so it sorely needed it, and I commend your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you know, nowadays, it's good to get 80% consensus. Doesn't seem that you have a lot. So, right there, that's a winning strategy. So, we'll go ahead then and open it up to members of the public who wish to comment. Here's your time. If you're in support, if you're not in support, please come up to the podium here and identify yourself, and then you can make the appropriate comments. And you don't all have to rush up at the same time. You can take your time.
Anybody on the phone?
Anybody on the phone wishing to make a comment? Star nine, there we are. Mr. Jackson, you're muted. So unmute yourself, or do we unmute There you are. You're muted now. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jackson Jenkins, and Frank Cassidy already introduced me that I was on the phone. And so, yes, I am speaking in support and am available also for questions. But I think it's been a very good effort by the Aliso Springs group, and we hope you feel that way when you vote.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jackson, or Mr. Jenkins. Great. So, if there are no further comments on this, I think it was pretty self-explanatory. I will say for the record that my wife's family is a Trujillo, but there's no relation. So, that was just interesting when I saw that. So, anyway, I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now convened into our regular session. Item 16, discussion, possible action to approve, resolution number 2120-6 for the formation and establishment of the Trujillo Trail Domestic Water Improvement District. And from what I understand, everything is in order. And Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. If I could, we don't do these very often, so I'd just like to make sure we cover all the points in statute. So, the petition, one of the requirements is the petition must be signed by the requisite number of owners. So, that has been achieved. With this vote, you're either going to say that it provides a public convenience, necessity or welfare will be promoted by the establishment of the district, or we're not. So, there's two motions there. And then the resolution you have in front of you will be the formal order that declares its findings, establishes the boundaries, and declares the improvement district organized. Okay, so I just wanted to read those into the record again. I've been here 20 years, and I think this is the third one we've done, so.
Yeah, we don't get requests too often. So, the request needs to say that it is a convenience for the...
Yes, sir. Well, the resolution will cover those requirements. If you vote in favor of the resolution, then that is what you're saying. You're saying that the proper number of owners signed, that it is a public convenience. The resolution will declare the findings, establish the boundaries, and declare the district established.
So, our resolution as presented to us for either approval or disapproval includes all the requirements that are included in the statute. So, we don't have to read the resolution, just move to adopt the resolution as presented. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, and, gentlemen?
Move to adjourn.
Good luck. Hey, you have that consensus here, so that's good. So, the last item is adjournment, and Supervisor Maleta move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we stand adjourned.